But also the ones that are turning left have more room to turn left at it. The other ones are way.
Yeah, gotcha. Cause it's like, you know, I mean, I'm driving a tiny car, but if there's like a pickup truck, I don't see any chance. I can't see anything until I'm almost in the middle of, like, I'm almost in the crosswalk.
As long as the truck turns into the, the truck's turning off Baker or on me.
Yeah.
Maybe that's not a white line there.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, there's not. And so I was looking at that the other day and I, yeah, um, glad I remembered that.
So you suggested you want them to stop our back this way.
For the left hand.
For the left, yeah, I think I've seen him where they're staying. Yeah.
Yeah, that's love. That's love. Yep.
And I mean, that's, I mean, this is the section of Baker that we're gonna be working on in summer of twenty twenty four. So I mean, that's, that's timely.
I'll put that grass up somewhere.
What exactly is happening? What exactly is happening on Baker Road at that? If, for that project?
Oh, they, I, 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 it's like a little reserve thing.
It's just for the other.
I believe so.
That's a, okay. I just wanna make sure.
To allow, to allow them, yeah.
The D E S M is starting there.
Or try and skip.
Yeah, I'm sure that yes, you will.
Yeah, I wonder.
Um, I've got all the information here to make sure we're.
Sure.
We're all.
Yeah, I knew what you were.
We're all doing the same.
Can we go back to Dexter Crossings, um, I'm kidding, I'm sorry, I just. When we at O H M look at this is, I would also like them to look at possibly moving where that trail comes out. As one of the options.
So, so, so I, I, I know that the trail is owned and maintained by the H O A.
Yeah, but we're already talking about working together.
Right, yeah.
It's, I'm not saying.
To put that in.
I think that we need to look at the whole picture to figure out what.
I mean, like, one could be just as slight and making it so it lines up with sort of the north side of the.
Well, yeah, if you want, if you want people not to cross in the intersection directly to the villages and don't bring them to the village.
Right, right.
Bring the, bring the, bring the.
Get down.
To the north.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do I have another question, please?
Sure.
Dexter Crossing, so if we could go down south where the potential annexation would be. You've got two points that are planned for through roads or connected roads. The one's Carrington and the other is Wellington, um, off on the, the other side of Wellington. Can you scroll a little more bit, Dexter?
Perfect.
So I see the one for Carrington, but, and there's the one for Wellington. Does the city wanna continue to have that stub there? Now that, uh, Mr. Heiser no longer owns that property, we, um, I don't believe there's been as much. There had, I don't believe there's been any construction traffic coming through there anymore. Like, if we're not going to connect it based on some of the discussions that had happened previously. Because Wellington being a more of a residential neighborhood street, as opposed to Carrington being a more of a through street. Does it make sense to, to plan for the termination of that as a vacation in the world then?
I will say you will have very big support.
I think that's, that's crossing, we're probably liking it. And, and I don't feel what. If the structure is in there either, but does it open the possibility of vacating it if it then can become another one?
Well, that isn't how vacation works. Half of that road will go to the property office and half will go to the property office.
I get that, I get that. But if those residents would be open to, does that, that's why just by opening up.
So.
If that then.
Well, no, um. That, I think we need to come back to that detail with, do you mind? That seems like. I mean, I don't know if the annexation is gonna happen or not. I mean, David Lutton was at our last meeting, I don't know if anybody noticed him in the audience. He didn't speak, he sat in the second row right there, he was quiet the whole time. Two days ago, in the afternoon, he sent me a very angry email. Cause he didn't hear us talking about annexation on our agenda.
Well, did I?
No, it wasn't. It wasn't. But he didn't hear us, he didn't hear us talking about it. And I did, I did ask Justin about the capacity study that was to our treatment plant during the report, which. You know, he has asked, part of his, I don't mean to change topics, but I'm gonna suddenly do it, so we can talk about this here. He has asked for needing to get up to speed on what utilities are. He would be able to connect to in that quarter. If, if he did put homes there, south of the system, can you pull a map up just so we can look at it? I mean, we're gonna wanna loop the water main through whatever it is there. The two logical ways to bring water main into that area are the two stubs. So I don't think, I don't think a home would go there. I would think it would end up being like a connected walking area. If it wasn't, if it isn't a street where there's two streets. You could envision a view there.
Yeah.
Drive in, drive out, which would, or, or you could have just one entrance enough of Carrington. I could, I'm not the designer, so I don't know what they're proposing there.
I would.
But, but, but I think, I think they're gonna need to figure, they're gonna, they're gonna ask the question, they wanna ask the question. How do we connect our sanitary for the green space area that will become homes? How do we connect it to the sanitary on Wellington or Carrington? And I don't know the utility system well enough to know where that is, where those are. But I guess before we talk about a whole bunch of time getting rid of that. It's likely that there's gonna have the utilities that go through there if an annexation occurs even without a roadway. And then it would just become a walking path, I would think, to connect the two sides of the subdivision, to kind of visualize what I'm saying.
If you're gonna connect it, the, the water's gonna be on the south side of Wellington and then the north side would be too. So that's the, go through the intersection that you're saying, like stubbed out right now and you connect those. You tee out, you tee out each stub.
Right.
With a gate valve and then loop it. And then you'd have to put manhole in for the sewer.
Right, because I know we're gonna want the water main looped.
Yes.
But a water main, that, that's just, I mean, road has to be, would crack?
But the.
No, I don't want it.
Put the, put the fire department on it or, you know, it's all about flexibility, right? I mean, your whole grid system is based upon no dead ends, so we only have one excess.
I was gonna say, once along Culbilly, is that near?
I'm not, I'm just bringing up what has been, what has been identified before. That if it was, and, and, forgive me, but I believe Sean, you're the one that pointed out, uh, previous when Mr. Lutton was here, that.
Yeah, Carrington has no driveways and.
Right, and that seemed to be an inappropriate connection point. But that was also when that, it was the tighter storm, not going back to Baker. This that he's talking about now is forty five acres, potentially seventy units. And it would not connect to Baker anymore. So that could have an impact on, on the, the conversation, and it does have an impact on the conversation. As to a, a road loop in whatever configuration that looks like.
So something that comes to my mind is that, as you mentioned, Carrington is more of a drive-through. And it would be a drive-through or going to the, to that subdivision. Even if there is a loop kind of thing there. There is a still, the way that the, the land is, most likely a lot of the traffic will go through Carrington. And one of the perks that we are talking of, this potential annexation, is that. It allows connection to the preserve and walking trails potentially in Syle. So if Carrington is the one that is more of a drive-through, having that patch in, on Wellington. To be more of a pedestrian going and connecting potentially to walking areas, it's much safer to have that sort of thing. So if we end up posing this stop and having, you know, utilities going through it or whatnot. I, I could see it being a better option to just being a, um, green or walking path that, that connects to that subdivision.
If you, if you think about it, if you can visualize a mirror image of what's there now. Where you've got Preston, Circle and Coventry, and, um, we're still coming down. You flip that.
Yeah.
That's how you, that's how you reach and do it.
Yeah.
The, the.
So now, Dexter, Dexter Crossing, Dexter Crossing is an interesting, um. Is an interesting conversation when you come to trails because. There, there are some residents in there that don't want anybody else on those trails.
On what trail?
The asphalt ones that go through itself.
Oh, I mean, the sign design makes that they are just for.
Well, right, but you connect, you connect that up to what Syle is, is making as a, as a public pathway. And you watch how controversial a topic that'll be when you connect the public one coming all the way up from Jackson. Well, in my brain, in my view, it, it should all be public, just like, like the ones going over the trail or other places in the town. But I know, that's why I'm saying the signs designate that those are for Dexter Crossing residents only. It's a special path. So I've always sarcastically laughed at, but, but, but that's the H O A's definition, they have the right to do it. You know, that's why there's, and that, there's not, like, there's not sidewalk on Carrington. Or Lexington, probably had Victoria County meetings.
Right, it's just out there.
You know, we wanna put it there, although, you know, our goal is to have sidewalk on two sides of every street. I, I'm just saying, that, that topic will come up, I'm sure, as, as this is all, if, if this is all shaped out. You know, I mean. Like, the, the sidewalk's public, right? And people, people could, people could walk up through the back of, through the back of a new subdivision homes. And get to the sidewalk and everybody'd be okay if they walked along the sidewalk. But the minute they cross the street and go on the asphalt path, it's taboo. And that's all.
I mean, I can't tell.
That's what it's, it's.
I can't tell who lives there and who doesn't, who's on it. I mean, and you wouldn't have to, I mean, I think if you obviously linked the one trail to another trail, I think. But right now, I don't see how you would obviously link it. Their house would be sidewalk. So I think, I need this new trail to go to a sidewalk.
Right, I'm, I'm just saying, you're gonna, you're gonna, you're, you're actually gonna get, I mean, if Carrington came in. Those houses, like, if Carrington came in, you, you, you extend the sidewalk on both sides and you're on the sub, right?
Yeah, it's not even obvious how to get to the trail from there. I mean, they can just turn right and then hop onto the trail. But it's not like it deposits you onto the trail.
Well, Sean's right, though. I mean, anytime we put trails anywhere, this is gonna top a hot.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it's hot.
It's gonna be sensitive if somebody lobs it.
Yep, that's true.
What I mean.
But I think it has, it has great potential. My, 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 my goal was, I think there's a huge advantage to that. Area to have a walking path to the south and enjoy the woods if that ever develops. To be able to walk south there would be fantastic. Cause this is the, this is the part of our community that's the least connected, right, the furthest away from the trail system. So to.
I think I've never felt that way. I felt like, oh, we live so close to the trail. I just go down Den Hallway, I jump by the schools and boom, I'm on a connect your path. Like, I feel like we're so close.
Good, I'm glad you do.
So I've never felt like it's so, it's so close. I mean, I, I would just say, like, in terms of these types of subdivision, people's perspective, I mean, I think there's a reason people live on that. Because they feel like they probably think there's a certain amount of protection and what's gonna happen, which is what happens out there. So, you know.
Good, I'm glad, I'm glad you feel it. So, so, let's go up here on Park for a second, Justin. Um, does everybody know Tom Phillips? You're glad to see him? Yep. So Tom, Tom was advocating or asking, and he did a presentation to us, I don't know, five, six years ago.
For them to cross?
Mm-hmm. On how do we get across a railroad track?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and that would be sweet too, right? It'd be great to have that.
I talked about that planning last week for this.
Oh, did it come up a bit? Okay. You know, but how do you go over the railroad? Or under, or under, you know? And which, which homes do you go through to get to the railroad, you know, to come to challenge? Also, but, uh, it would, having connected activity of the subdivisions or multiple connections to our trails is important to me if we, if there were ways to do it, is what I'm trying to say. I think it's just a huge benefit for everybody.
Okay, I'm gonna say something out loud that I don't really, maybe the dumbest thing I've ever said out loud in a public meeting. But we were talking about that, uh, planning. Chad Hill, I mean, is adamantly against using the Bell Room Bridge to go over the, could we use it there? Just thinking.
He's still gonna have the same problems.
No, that's fine.
He did, he talked to us about it, talked to Kelsey.
But it's less, that's less, I would say that would be less traffic, right?
And, and you can really see it from really anywhere.
But yeah, and that was his issue. He didn't want, he thought it was too big for the parking.
Right, you might really see it.
So if you put it back there. I just like recycling. You know, use the rock.
Can we go back to the possible, uh, prob, uh, the annexation? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's true. I mean, and when do we all talk about this? When do we figure out what the pros and cons are? When do we? I, I, I weaved into it with your stub, but, so he, you know, he, he has told me that. He wants us to be talking to Syle about annexation. Okay, what I told him was that, back in January, after he gave me that drawing that I shared with all of you. The area plan or the concept thing wasn't showing very much, but, um. I tried to summarize the comments that I heard all of you say for him after the federal court meeting. It wasn't exactly all in one direction. You know, what I, what I heard was, was, was all over the place. So I tried to tell him there were some people that were, you know, very supportive of it. You know, said Zach would be willing to do six hundred or more, you know, a lot bigger density. And that's not necessarily bad, but that he, he was on that side of it. Yeah, I think you made the comment that you'd like to see a comment of a road from Baker, which I don't know that he's envisioning, but I think that was what you said. I just think in more of a lines, um, of, of the property between desk and, and knowing.
Gotcha.
In the industrial park.
Okay.
Where I was from.
Gotcha.
Relative to the industrial park. Okay, relative to the industrial park.
Gotcha, not the industrial park.
Okay, so. So I, I mean, all we have to do, if there's interest in having that conversation, I, I wanna represent this body. You know, I think that seventy homes is a manageable number. And I've made the statement to him that I think our, our water system and our wastewater systems could probably handle. The addition of seventy homes there. Part of the reason why capacity study on the topic is because, you know, I'm, I'm not that great at the plan. I don't. Have you seen the study? Is the study done? No, 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 we don't have a study.
Well, well, that study was the same one you saw since years ago.
It's on fifteen.
Yeah, so, so, so the idea is to, to get healthy to that, to set a new baseline and see where we're at relative to. The developments that we know are on the horizon and the ones that we, you know, are kind of floating on either that could be on the horizon and.
That's, that's what you gotta look at. And that's the key to where we're at, is what we think, what we think's gonna happen. And what possibly could happen, and how that's gonna play out if the annexation happens. If you're the seventy homes, that's, that's a difficult big discussion we'd have.
Yeah.
I mean, what's the pride, what are you, as far as I'm proud, in town versus in.
That's what I was just gonna say. I don't think I can even think about the annexation until we have this study, this capacity study. Showing all of my various developments in, within the city limits that we already have.
Are you, that's why I asked at the last meeting, you know, do we have a proposal to?
And that doesn't mean I'm against it. It just means, I need that piece of information before I can consider what makes sense.
That's the most important part of this whole thing, is bringing all of us together, not just for what might happen, but what is gonna happen in the future.
So do we, so, so do we wanna ask Mr. Lutton to pay for that?
Yeah.
I, I was just about to bring that up. I, we're gonna make foreign comments for it.
Because again, Justin, tell me what was the preliminary number that you got from.
So, 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 the, the, I, I went back and, and looked, I, I wasn't a hundred percent on what we talked.
Right.
Um, the, the numbers that I got from that in the O H M were for the Water Master Plan.
Oh.
Not capacity study.
Okay.
Um, I actually had a meeting with O H M, uh, yesterday. And they thought that it, it wouldn't be, uh, a huge lift to take that plan and, and update it, or take that capacity study and update it.
Well, even if it's ten thousand dollars, let's just say ten thousand dollars to, you know. Go ahead.
When we first started that discussion, and you said, Mr. Lutton was here, and he was upset that we didn't talk about it. And he said that we need to be talking to Syle Township about the annexation. I'm having a real problem with what sounds like a real sense of entitlement. And the fact of the matter is, Mr. Sutton, or Lutton, or whatever the name is, he needs to go to Syle and talk about that. He needs to get the capacity study done, and that's what he can be done. He needs to do this stuff because he stands for benefit. We can say, we don't wanna do it, we don't, we, there is, as far as I know. There is no law that says that we have to annex in land and we don't want to. It's completely at our discretion and it should be the other way. He should not be making the ban, he should be asking, how can I help you to get there?
Yeah, I think Joe, the question is, if, if, if we are moderately interested in exploring it, that's what, that was his initial question to us back in July of last year. Are we interested at, at all in evaluating the precision? And we've never, we've not given, well, well, I know you can, you can say, well, I don't know how to say yes without no data. Or you can say, I'm moderately interested. To help us get there, we need you to help pay for this.
If I could help clarify too, so Sean had mentioned Mr. Lutton had asked for, um, a, a meeting with the city to talk about engaging with Syle. It was my understanding that, um, we shouldn't move forward to schedule that. Until we have a better understanding of what direction Council wanted to go as far as the bigger question. And so I had indicated to Mr. Lutton, um, and Mr. Culver in an email. That it was my understanding that it was going to be talked about at the last council meeting in some form. That's why he was here and, um, um, like Sean said, it was tangentially discussed as part of, uh, capacity. But not in the way that he nor I communicated to him had anticipated, so.
Well, for just in this communication. The framework of this, this context, I don't know, I mean, when, when he was asking, are we interested in that? We had a potentially open annexation offer from Foreman Farms that was out there. And the capacity study is still relevant to even that, or was relevant to that, which has since come off as an option. I think I heard you say that they're not going to request that.
They're, right, they have, they have decided not to move forward with it.
So, you know, that, that part of the study is not as important, I guess, or not the driver anymore.
Well, but, I mean, at this time, I mean, it's possibly can come back later as well.
Right, and it, we, we would have to still decide what would include, right?
Okay.
That's the.
I agree a hundred percent, but the thing is, is that.
I mean, I mean, it's, it's partially a planning tool for us.
Yeah.
If we're not. And, and, and there's a component of it that I could, I think we could argue and say, hey, a big chunk of it is, or a portion of it we'd like you to pay for. And that would relieve the burden of all of ours.
Well, if, if we, if we do that, if we say that we want that financial assistance in doing this. I mean, my assumption would be that if you pay for something, you're gonna say, okay, what are you gonna do with it now? Right? I mean, I'm sure it's gonna have an expectation that that's a step moving forward, right?
Yeah, but like you said, there's nothing, I mean, we can't really, we can't affirmatively answer a question until we know some of those answers.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? Like I said, my, my gut tells me we have capacity.
Well, I mean, maybe it's.
Maybe that's.
Right or wrong. Is there anything else that we need? Is there anything anybody else needs? Is capacity, is that the one thing that we're looking at? Is there something else that we say?
Look for water.
Or.
Look for water?
Oh, well, oh, well.
Absolutely.
Yeah, well, that's true. That's a lot of land out there that it doesn't, some spot in that land had a well.
That's what I'm saying. I don't know how we go through this. I've never, I mean, I've always been sitting with him saying.
Well, so, so, yeah, I wish I could be more certain of some things. I mean, what I heard Will Hathaway from South Township say was. He believes that his board would support annexation of that small portion of that property. If Mr. Lutton would agree to preserve the majority of the remaining portion. So everybody's got a carrot and a tether at the same time, you know? Dave Lutton can't really develop, he can't get the density on forty five acres unless he connects to the city. By density, I mean seventy homes, as opposed to, as opposed to one, he's gonna do well in Septic there. What he could do, you know, he's not, he's not gonna get seventy homes, you know?
No, he'll be able to give one or unit per acre.
One unit per acre.
And I'm gonna figure eighty percent of forty five acres.
Yeah, he's gonna get much less than homes, so.
Well, the thing. And I, and I, I.
I, so, so if, if there's, if there's, if there's, at least, I don't know whether we need to vote on it necessarily, but if there's. If there's, um, moderate interest from everybody. I'll just go to, I'll just go to Will Hathaway and, and Lutton and say, okay, we're interested, Will, and ship me out, ship me out water and annexation and agreeable replacement.
For me, I think it was only recently.
It's like, I was gonna assume there's a four hundred five, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, the most recent plans we saw were the least dense, least dense plans, right, that did not have a connection to Baker Road.
Correct.
So that was the first time I was remotely interested in it.
I was.
To see something with four hundred homes or six hundred, whatever it was, although its previous plans was not at all interested in that. I'm interested in something of a much smaller scope, like what was proposed recently. I'd probably even be fine if it was one acre lots. Um, I still think to do it, we need to know, like, what's in it for the city. There needs to be some, you know, I mean, we need to confirm those numbers.
Well, those questions, so, so if, if it was a straight annexation and Syle just gives up the property. What would be in it for the city is from the time the rest of the things are built. We would get a hundred percent of the tax revenue, we'd get a hundred percent of the water sewer revenue. It would be like anything built in, in our property.
Right.
My, my guess is.
Cap use.
Yeah, we'd get the cap use, which we won't get a whole of the system.
The cap fees in the streets pays in.
But, but, what, what, what's likely gonna happen is Syle's gonna say, well, we're giving up land, so we want to have an agreement. Similar to what we have in other areas, where they get a portion of the tax revenue.
Right, what period of time does that usually?
Well, that's negotiated, you know.
What ad hoc typically, or like what?
It's twelve years in our Webster agreement that was done back in nineteen ninety seven.
Wow.
Twelve years since we became a city. But it's, right, right, it's twelve years, yeah, since we became a city, any property within that would, would pay for twelve years.
Right.
So that ended then or no? No, cause it was given. Okay.
So we became a city in two thousand fourteen.
Right.
So all the Webster properties, all of the, well, if you, if, if U M R C had any component of it. All of those that were in Webster, they will end in twenty twenty six, I think. Our, our twelve year commitment, and what, and what we're paying to them is, is what the Webster Township Village would, would have been on that property, so it's like one mill. But does that make sense what I'm saying?
Right, yeah, so, yeah, I, yeah, I would also be interested in the water thing. Like, to me, I think there needs to be more, more in it than just capture.
So, so, um, I, we've had, we had a meeting with the schools, um, this last week, um, about the Parker Road sewer line. And after that meeting, um, Dr. Temes pulled me aside and asked about this property and, um, I asked him about one. And that's, that's probably the, the, the possible annexation.
Oh, okay.
And, um, he, he just went outside, we, we need more homes. I can think of there are like two hundred and seventy kids now and they.
You told Sean that yesterday.
Okay.
They need more students.
So. And you guys learn the same.
Yes, the graduating morning and.
It's just that.
It's also not all in the city, cause the town, Dexter Township is growing, and those kids go.
The school district is.
Yeah, part of Syle.
Too, yeah.
Yeah. Well, Wellington Drive will give them about ten in four years.
So to, to go back to the water, even if we find water out there, we still need to filter it possibly, iron removal. I mean, there's gonna be a huge expense that's going to be part of the city. It, it, and they did a lot of cheap work for that. I mean, we're not gonna make them pay for.
Well, what I'm getting at is, so, so this. Well, what I'm getting at is, so, so this is what, this is what gets more, more information. It's good because it's why you left time and think about it. So I think, you know, I'm happy to go back to him and say, look, we're interested in the annexation, but we're also interested in knowing whether the well is possible on that site. You know, we wanna know the, we wanna understand the timing of, of trails in the area and what do you, we wanna know more, right? But it's a three-party, I mean, there's things that the developer might be willing to do, and there's things that we have to work out with Syle. There's been multiple, there's multiple conversations here. I just didn't want to go forward and pretend to start doing anything until I understood whether or not there was support to have those kind of interests. It doesn't mean we have to actually do it, but we could, we could work through the framework of it and if it seems like there's something that's an advantage to us, you know, then I'll tell them we would, we would vote on that, right? But there's, there's nothing wrong with being proactive and working towards it. I don't want to mislead Dave, Dave Lutton, I've tried not to the whole time. And Jamie, I wasn't interested in six hundred or four hundred either, I never been, so.
Yeah, to go back to what Joe was talking about with Mr. Lutton paying a portion of all of the study that we need to do, it's responsible by him and on our part to, to do this. We all need to be on the same page as we go forward. And two thousand fifteen, I don't know what the schedule is for keeping up on what you have for capacity, but I think it's responsible by him. Do I think that he should pay a portion of that? I mean, if we do do this, I believe he should. And there, there's no guarantees that even if he's for this, this is, you know, we've got a lot of things to work, you know?
I will, I will say, so, on, on the standpoint of development, no, I don't wanna see a big huge development there. Schools' desire is notwithstanding, the, I mean, even if we put six hundred homes there, in ten years, the school's gonna have the same exact problem. They've got long-term demographic problems. It's the same thing in the city and, you know, it's just, there are less kids than there used to be.
I, 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 I just wanted to, to, to share what was, what was at, you know, the, 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 the matter of difference.
So the other thing that he pointed out is, and to last point, yes, in the township, you've got buildings going in. But those are homes that are coming in at minimal six hundred thousand off.
Right.
And the, to qualify Chris's comment is, they need families. They need people that have children that they bring into the district. And families can't afford a starter home of six hundred thousand dollars. So this, what I find as a planner very interesting about this whole conversation is how it dovetails with some of the other things in your goals and, and objectives regarding housing, whether it's affordable or attainable, and how do we, how does council create and then, create the policies that implement what you wanna see? So we can talk about seventy new homes and how that might help the school district from the surface maybe, but if it's six hundred thousand dollar homes or more, that's not gonna help the school district though.
And, and when, a long time ago, can't remember when, the schools had said they were seeing increases in the middle school and the high school more than they were in the elementary school. And the reason was, for exactly that reason, that Dexter was a community that had homes that were move-up homes, right? I mean, you came from Avonia, I came from Dearborn, a lot of people moved here in Arbor. And it's a move-up, right? It's not their starter home, they don't have any younger kids, so they were seeing less, I mean.
It's hard to affect that.
You have to go, yeah.
We have to figure out what policies you want.
Right, right, but, I mean, as far as this goes, I mean, I, I agree a hundred percent, I had not thought about it, but that's a pretty suggestion about, there's gonna be a ton of open green space there. I mean, we would all own a place for the.
That's a good question.
If we can get a six and well that was in there that would feed in from the center, that would be, if you wanna think about public benefit, that would be huge. Between that and potential for trails that would go here there, connection crossing and allow that connection through there. You know, I mean, so that type of stuff I'd be willing to look at. Again, I still think that a lot of the focus falls on what to do and the work that needs to be done. The other thing is, I, I've only heard snippets of this from different people, so I wanted to give more feedback. I think it would be helpful to have access from Baker to that so that not all of the traffic comes through Dexter Crossing. Might have the opposite effect that you have people from Dexter Crossing that end up leaving through there. But I don't know what you all think about that or if that's something that you think would be, I mean, cause I'm just, I've got the, the, the map thing hold up and it's like, it's a long ways over Baker. And so, but I, I guess so, that's essentially where I am with this. And I would prefer an annexation not in twenty twenty-five because nothing drives anymore than having the access to township that we essentially have nothing for on our own, so.
Well, annexation is gonna be, you know, it's new to off, oh, whole parks and half the lot have just let me do that.
Right, okay. I don't think that annexing that.
Or we could, I mean, actually, I mean, we, we could say we want to annex it. And all, all developers do is say, whoever else they want to access, then we.
Go to city button.
We go to stay by. And then we probably win the argument because Syle can't provide the water and sewer. And, but, but it isn't, but it isn't, it isn't, it isn't. In good neighborhood.
No, I understand, I understand. But if, if that huge area that was on that last map that we saw, if that was all included and the development rights were, you know, written off or whatever, and it's kept those green spaces and that became recreational area and stuff like that for, like I said, I mean, the, the trail that goes out of Westridge, I mean, they were talking about that two thousand, when we were looking at building, they were talking about it before it was even feasible. We weren't even getting any idea about how to do it before you're in Metro Parks and talk about putting the trail in. When that trail went in, that was huge, I mean.
They were just gonna have the road check, over.
But even when they put in the stuff, I think there was a vote they had in the homeowners association. One person voted no. It was like ninety-two to one or something like that, it was something, I mean, people want that.
That, the connection into there and.
Where the Dexter Crossing.
I do. Well, and for the, for the rest of the city too, I mean, anybody can use it, it's, it's another spur and another direction, you know?
Is there a scenario where, I mean, given the part, you know, the seventy homes or whatever, where we just annex the part that has the homes and then the preserves stays in Syle?
Oh, no, that would absolutely stay in Syle, you know, we would only annex the part that has the homes.
That has the homes, right.
Yeah, yeah, Syle wants to keep the rest of it preserved and, and they, I think they have, they're, part of their strategy, Jamie, would be to use some of either their P D R money, private development rates, or they have another land preservation, something.
Village.
Village, that they, they would be buying that land from Mr. Lutton or paying him essentially to put it into a conservation easement where it would stay provided the developers. Yeah, buying it, right, right.
I mean, in terms of a trail, we have, when you go out Carrington to go right down Dexter and Arbor, there is like a sidewalk, the, the beginning's a sidewalk going east, southeast.
Dexter and Arbor?
Yeah, I would just think, I mean, if you're gonna connect a trail and you wanted, like, I don't know if it's gonna be like a B two B type trail thing, or if these are just like interior walking trails, but and, and I don't know, cause, you know, they've connected it all the way to Ziv, you know, here at Ziv and Dexter and Arbor Road, you know, they've got that big pathway there. I don't know if they have plans of coming down Dexter and Arbor Road with a sidewalk-y type trail or not. But we do have that sidewalk stuff, so it just seems like if you're gonna try to connect and it was more like a biking trail, which maybe they're not planning that, you could go this side of all those homes on Wellington and just cut up to the sidewalk to Dexter and Arbor Road, and then you're not cutting through a neighborhood.
Correct.
But, you know, to the point about connecting to Baker Road, I, like, I'm not, I'm just not in favor of that, cause I just, my concern is, yeah, maybe it makes it easier for people from, people from Dexter Crossing to get to Baker Road, but I also think it's an opportunity for people to get from Baker Road to cut through Dexter Crossing to get to downtown. And I just don't think it's difficult to get to Baker Road from that location, so I don't know that people in that neighborhood would perceive it to be a benefit.
And I think that's good feedback, I, that's what I'm, because really even though they're not needed, so.
Right.
One thing though, just to hammer to off of that, I think a road to Baker for the construction or the road through the industrial park, the connection through the industrial park, one of those two things needs to be part of the plan because.
For that window.
For, for the construction.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so. And it could be just coming up at the industrial park and then doing shore.
Oh, is there gonna be doing pass-through there, they're gonna have to be bringing in some material?
Yeah.
Or some kind of.
But we don't want the material coming through Dexter Crossing.
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
Oh, absolutely, I agree with you, yeah. Okay, well, is, I will, I will talk to, continue talking to Dave Lutton then. I did respond to his email and explain to him that the dates that they have proposed for the meeting, Michelle wasn't even with me down on it. And that we did have on our agenda today to talk about the capacity study. That seemed to settle down in his response to me a little bit, but. And I didn't, I don't know, did he use the word angry as only as not saying it to you? I don't, I don't, I don't know how angry he really was or he just tried, you know, make a point or whatever, but. I will talk to Will Hathaway and keep you guys informed. Probably what we would do if we were gonna get into annexation and/or four twenty-five discussions, it would be helpful probably to have a subset of council be able to meet. And Jamie's analysis, you guys are in that sub group. Be great if one of you would, or two, or we could do up to three without, because it's be great to have you involved. Does that make sense to you guys?
Yes.
Okay. I'll try to set that up, I'll try to set that up, that's okay, everybody. I'm glad to hear that it's not the big number for the.
The sewer's like, that, that's.
Yeah.
The two toll booth are a thousand bigger than ours.
Yeah. You know, it, it's, it's interesting. Our plant was designed for a certain capacity. You know, and at one time we had a probably a boundary and a set of assumptions, how many, how many homes and all this stuff. It's interesting as a community that's, you know, been here now almost two hundred years. Of course, we only have the plant fifty or whatever it is, or forty-five or whatever it is.
The new plant went in, in seventy-seven, but that's one there prior to that that we tore off.
Okay, so, you know, we've got a more modern plant for the last forty-five years or whatever. And I do think it is part of our responsibility to know what capacity we have left from time to time. Every, every ten years or so, this community's gotta do that study. And just be aware of where we are, you know, cause like Joseph, to Joseph's point, I, I, at one point in time, I had four people in my house. You know, but it's down to Christian, and I can tell you they don't use as much water as what I have. You know?
We, we talked, Justin and I talked about that with OHM because of that big number that came back and it basically said that we're gonna do so much this year and the next year we'll get the bigger.
Or, or the, for the water match.
Yes.
Yeah, this is, this is, I think, a waste site. This is sewer.
Oh, my bad, that's, sorry, I thought you were still talking about the water.
Well, the, well, the water leads to the sewer, no, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, at the end, going, yeah.
They, they go hand in hand, right? Well, the thing is, is that we, it seems like over the past five, ten years, we've had different people come to us with different things that are possible.
Yep.
So I don't know if it shouldn't be every five years we, we review this because it would make it a lot easier on, on Michelle or engineers or Tim or Justin and us to have all that information fresh, you know? I think right now we could look back at the two thousand fifteen study if we didn't have the possible annexation or the four twenty-five or whatever.
Right.
I mean, that would be a good reflection, but when you add things like Corbin Farms or this, it, it changes things a little bit, and.
Well, and, and, you know, what, what I, what I could imagine coming out of the, the update of the study is that, you know, we, we, the size of the pipes likely is not the issue. It's more than likely the B O D is the boss for us, you know, what's, what's, what's in the waste that is the limiting factor.
Definitely, if you're gonna put a berrier in, I mean, or another gas pack that's gonna use a lot of water, I mean, wastewater treatment plants ultimately where you build the residential. Okay, switch topics to Dexter Senior Center. So Michelle mentioned that we were with Dr. Timmons, Chris Timmons yesterday. Gordon Smith from the Senior Center had a meeting yesterday, invited Koi Fong from National County Parks, Michelle and I from the city, Dr. Timmons from the schools, Jim Carson, who's from the board, he's in the board. And then Tony.
Colani?
Colani from.
From Wyatt.
From Wyatt, can't have a Wyatt. And the bottom line is, there, there is, there is a real growing interest and sentiment that somehow this community should buy the wellness center that's on the sale.
Not the city.
Not necessarily the city. The community, yes, the, the community.
The recreational authority?
Well, not, well, let me just, let me just roll, I was there.
The reason I said that, that sounded like things like, no, it's like.
It's not defined, maybe when you talk. The, the, the sentiment is starting to get defined, but the, the county is building some type of multi-generational recreational facility on the border of Superior Township and Pipslandi Township on the east side of the county. And they are, I say they're building, they're trying to build, they're not yet building. They are, they have momentum to do something there, it's been in the works for several years and it's anticipated to be the number of thirty million dollars worth of county investment to allow, to provide better access to recreation and foster wellness to those residents over there. And the thirty million is the number that's assigned to it, that Koi, everybody talks about, talks about. The cost of the forty, and they're, that's for like sixty thousand square feet of space that you plan. The wellness center here is about forty-eight, forty-six, forty-eight thousand square feet. And the, and I asked yesterday and it was told that it's listed at nine and a half million, but that their debt is seven, or seven point two or something like that. Michelle wasn't the one who heard that.
I got my information from the chat house.
So, anyway, Chris Timmons is looking at whether or not the schools could buy it.
Just flat out, like without an addition.
Without an additional village, you know, they're, they're, they're taking a hard look at that. I asked the question, you know, it's not clear, the, the county doesn't have seven million. Okay, the county doesn't even necessarily have a portion of seven million. We don't have seven million. The schools might be able to come up with that, but, you know, if, if they owned it, they would wanna make sure that they were, you know, some of the people using it. I threw out the idea that it might be something the city and the schools jointly own. Question then became, what, what, what people seem to have figured out is that between the Y and five healthy towns, there seems to be models for operating. The Y has a pretty stable program, or offering program to generate revenue that they've been successful with all across the country. Side healthy towns has indicated they wanna still invest in helping all this in this area. Anyway, I guess in spite of, to make everybody here aware that there is a growing interest amongst the community, even more and more people are talking about what happens to that building. And I suppose there's two, there's three options. One, it continues to sit on the soul, and looks the wellness foundation is gonna have to deal with that because it's on their books. I don't think it would bankrupt them, but that's, they're trying to get off under it because it's costing them too much to operate it. It could be bought by a private company. You know, Plan Fitness or, I'm saying that, I don't, I don't remember that name, that's only a big one. You know, it could be bought by somebody like that. You know, it could be bought by somebody like that, or the community could own it and operate it. There's this kind of growing thought out there. So I just wanted to throw that out there, I don't, I don't know if there's any interest. Has anybody asked, and is anybody interested in this topic, or, or in talking about this, or?
I have a question, can you elaborate on the community? What you think that means?
So, I think that means the school district area. I think it's inclusive of Webster Township, I think it's inclusive of Dexter Township potentially, and it's inclusive of portions of Syle, maybe not the eastern end of Syle, but portions of Syle. Okay, the, the, Tony from the Wyandotte was really sharp yesterday, she, she made the comment that those facilities succeed when people within a twelve to fifteen minute drive or access, have the ability within that, that timeframe, that's, that's where they'll go. They're, they're not gonna drive forty minutes to go though. But if you're within the twelve to fifteen minute window, so, you know, you, if you play that out, how far away do you have to be to be twelve, fifteen minutes away from there? I think it's, the, the school district is probably, is pretty close to what I envision. I also heard yesterday that Webster Township is considering a direct contribution to the Senior Center somewhere in the order of eight to ninety thousand dollars. On, at least on the next, as part of the next budget cycle. Which would be huge up from where they are, they don't spend anywhere near that. We need to sixteen, and I anticipate that we're gonna get a letter requesting thirty as part of this budget. It's important to indicate, we'll see what they write, but that's what I'm thinking. Go ahead.
We are members of Dexter Wellness Center, I don't think that would make me part of this conversation. We were actually members when we lived in Ann Arbor. We drove from Ann Arbor to the Dexter Wellness Center after having toured facilities in Ann Arbor, and we preferred it, and we appreciated the drive out here, and that's, yeah, we drove from Miller and Newport to the Dexter Wellness Center. And it liked when you crossed wind farms, and it opened up, and it was just like part of the experience. Anyway, so we remember for that one year, then we moved to another part of Ann Arbor, so we remember that Wasna Community College, and then moved here ultimately, and finally kids got old enough, so we've been members just since the summer. So it will be sad for it to change, I think, because we like what they have there, but it, we know people come from outside of the city of Dexter to use it. I don't, I would not support the city, only the city paying, or I would not even support the schools owning it. I think what makes sense is something either, if you have to form the rep authority or not, if you feel like you need to let the village, or you just go to the community that would have been part of the rep authority, and see what monies they can pool together to purchase it, and maybe that's something they can do without a village. But I just, I do see where it is a big benefit to more than just the city. It could be the home of the Senior Center, it could be home of, you know, more community programming. I think I mentioned the last time, like the Mary Lou Rep Center, which is a county-owned building. Yeah, I would like it to stay that type of a use. I'm fine if it expands to include the Senior Center and some other things like that. And for some reason, I just wouldn't want it to be so littered by the schools, because to your point, and they would wanna take priority for those times, and so they have playgrounds, you know, they're available, but they don't want you to use them during, you know, the school day, because that's what they're using, you know? So then you just get these like weird funky hours where you can use things.
That's right, that's where the program, and, and Dr. Timmons actually acknowledged it. He said, he said it would be great if we could have, you know, a couple hours a day after the, after the school hours to balance some of their volleyball slash, you know, programs or whatever.
Right.
But we quickly got into, I asked him, I said, well, what does a couple hours a day mean? You know, I said, is your open seven days a week, fifteen hours a day, six A M. to nine P M. or something like that?
Yeah.
You know, out of those hundred and five hours, what do you think? You know, and he was like, well, and I think, I think, I don't remember what nobody threw out there, but Tony from the Wyandotte who said, well, if you're, if you have too many hours, you're gonna break the model of what, we really need access to the facility to make it work by any operation or for anybody else.
Right.
But.
So would, like, the Y in that name be part of this? Is, like, is that on the table?
Well, the Y would be, you know, you know, the.
Owning the building, owning the building is one thing.
Right.
And then having people that are there, that work there, that.
But it potentially could be called a Y, you're saying? Like, that's on the table, at least?
They wouldn't own it.
Right.
They would, they would operate it.
Do they own and operate their others? Is that, what is their model? Do they typically own and operate, or do they typically just operate?
Uh, both.
They can do both.
They said both, okay.
In, with this case, if I, if I knew what she was saying, it was the, the, it would be an operator role.
It would be, right, right, whereas it's on the.
Coyvon was a doctor of parks, I've known her for quite a while, and he invited her to the table, we had a very success. And she said that the Y has, what did you call it, reciprocity? Where if you, if you joined the Y, if you were to join the Y here, you could use anything otherwise, you know?
Dexter Wellness has.
The same with there.
Three, whereas reciprocity for the Y.
Huge, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the, the, she also touched on the membership rate as a, as a Y operator would be a fraction of what, what is paid for it at.
And Jamie, I, you know, I don't know what, what works and what doesn't work, but, you know, it's obviously in the city. I don't know that we're necessarily good at open buildings yet. This is the first building we've owned right here, right, we're just figuring out how to build it. The part of it that attracted me to the idea of the schools, and the schools take care of buildings. And they, that's, they have buildings, they have buildings. Most of ours, most of ours are pretty well taken care of and, and, you know, supported, and they're in good condition for our kids and for the teachers and the work there and what have you.
Although they just used their public pool for the first time, the schools.
What, where, which one, Wiley?
No, the schools, at whatever, wherever our community pool is, Dexter Community Pool.
Wiley.
Wiley.
Wiley? Yeah.
Over by Riley's Elementary.
Need some work, for sure.
Yeah, does it, I mean, wow.
May already.
You know, we used to vote, we used to vote in that building.
It's my first time in there, and I.
It smelled like chlorine, every time you go there, it was the weirdest thing to go there.
There's no other way, though, to get a village for all surrounding townships unless it's through the school, right?
Well, we don't have to. Well, so, well, we could set up a rep authority. But right now, we're the only ones that seem might have latched into doing it. And I, we can still set up the rep authority. Okay, that doesn't mean that we're, we could set up the rep authority on behalf of the Senior Center Board. It, well, our responsibilities would then be to appoint a board, of which I'm sure several numbers of the existing senior board are volunteer. It would then be up to them, if they wanted to get funding from city residents to propose a village, it wouldn't be in our hands, you know, they would have that authority, but, 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 any, any villages would have been passed unless it was something that was openly supported by operator. But what I like about the rep authority is it takes it out from under our general one. It puts it in a different, just for the city, though.
They can only go for the city.
Well, we can only do it, that's my point, that's my point, is that, we need, the only way we can get to everybody is. But if, but if we do it, that doesn't mean it can't be expanded. I mean, it might be setting it up, because, I'm not saying we do this our way, but it might be that setting it up is one way to offer the Senior Center a revenue stream, and they would have to figure out what, you know, what village to request.
If it is the case where there's a rep authority, that is only the city of Dexter, so the village is only coming from the city, then I think it's easy for city of Dexter residents to have a rep. And anybody using it from somewhere else is going to be.
I mean, part of the discussions with the other townships are, they don't know if they, and I'm not saying solve it, but they may not wanna do a village, right? But the thing is, it's like, the Senior Center knows exactly who's there, exactly who to member. I mean, right now, membership's twenty-five dollar a year, that's, that's what it costs to join the Senior Center.
Less than two bucks a month.
Yeah. So, the, but I agree with you, let's say it's, let's say it's a half a mil. I mean, I don't know what that is, that's probably like a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars or something like that. Well, what if there's, I don't know, say there's two hundred residents, right? That's five hundred and sixty dollars a year that we're paying per senior that's in there? I mean, and then you're gonna say, oh yeah, it's twenty-five bucks a year if you wanna come on in here.
Right.
No, you gotta, I mean.
They have to, they know they're gonna change that how, that could spell that movement, and that's what it is today.
And what I would suggest is, if we were to consider doing recreation village, and then we need to communicate to the other seniors that use the Senior Center, it's gonna cost you five, six, eight hundred, something like that, dollars a year to have to continue to use the Senior Center unless you go talk to your township board to tell them you want them to become part of this recreation. I mean, it's the only, because we're not gonna be able to go to them and say, I mean, they've gone from being all in to being all out, right? Everybody's taken a step back and letting the city of Dexter build it.
Well, but, but, I mean, to, to, to their point, they've decided, again, I don't think I have the right number, you know, eighty thousand, eighty-five thousand dollars.
Yes.
John Sharp has figured out that they can afford to have it in budget eighty-five thousand dollars.
Right.
I don't know what that comes down to, a lot of per person.
Right.
You know, but eighty-five thousand is, you know, we have to do a half mil here to be more than that, right?
Yeah.
A third of a mil would, would maybe be insane.
Yeah, absolutely, if they're coming to the deal with some bigger financing, that would have obviously built a figure into the way, so.
Right.
And the Y didn't wanna buy it, I mean, did they have any interest from some other?
Didn't sound like it yesterday. Didn't sound like it yesterday. So supposedly, supposedly, does everybody know Sharon Gratchby's? She's the finance director for the school of this area. Pretty sharp lady when it comes to numbers and stuff, she's been there a long time. She has figured, she actually went to Dr. Timmons and said that she thinks that they're, they have the ability to, to buy this pretty easily under their existing or obstruction. Yeah. Because the taxable values are going up five percent this year, creates a different level of income for them or whatever, and.
They could have a bond they have in two years.
They could, yeah, I don't know if it was that number, it's pretty, pretty quickly, they could, they could figure out how to do it. I haven't seen the numbers to, you know, buy into it or to know it, but that's, that's what Dr. Timmons alluded to, that, that's what drew his interest. If, from a campus perspective, it's right next to their campus, so it's contiguous to the school campus on that regard.
It's like what's happening at University of Michigan, they're just, I don't want that.
I don't worry about it. I understand. Okay, I, I just wanted everybody to make sure that you're aware of the, the people's understanding of that issue. I mean, I'm, I'm supportive of, of trying to find a home for the Senior Center. I think, and, and, but what I liked about the conversation is that it's turned into not just facility that maybe the seniors could use, but that there's the idea of a multi-generational facility.
Right.
But obviously, the, the more users, the bigger the space you need. And this space, just the timing of this space becoming available is drawing everybody to put them together a little bit, and to see if there's a way to bring that out.
I have one other comment on that site, they should build that built a lot of them that they've never been able to build on.
Yes.
And I think it's more because of capacity of the site, they don't have room for parking and stuff.
That's the perception, yes.
Well, it's gonna go from bad to worse if it goes to something like the Y. I mean, well, well, so, so let's talk about that, they, they have, they have some, supposedly they have twenty-six hundred members, I heard that number, right?
And that's down.
Twenty-seven.
All right, twenty-seven, you know, all of a sudden, twenty-seven hundred, maybe, yes.
I asked the question, you know, do, did I, did anybody think that those members would stay, you know, depending on how building turnover? You know, burden hands always better than one you gotta find, right? I don't know, do they have a parking lot in there now with twenty-seven hundred users?
Sometimes, we've heard. We know because, because the pharmacy isn't there anymore, but we used to hear through the pharmacy that parking was tight, you heard a little bit from the wellness center. But that was in the beginning when it was first, you know, post, it was pre-COVID. Post-COVID, there haven't been a lot of complaints. I have seen times when the parking lots are pretty full. But they also have land bank parking in that green area to the side of the wellness center, that's all land bank area. There, there's really no reason that that pad up front couldn't be developed. Why it hasn't moved? I would almost say it costs, but I wouldn't say that because of parking.
Well, like I said, the, the, the thing that's striking for most people when they're talking about this is that, you know, if, if you waited for the county to try and do a building similar to what they're doing on the east side, how here on the west side, it's gonna cost five times more than what this school would cost to get this building. There's already one there that could be used, that's, that's the.
Yeah.
That's the momentum behind the thought. And the thought is that you could get it, if somebody could own it, was, whether it was jointly or otherwise, it could then be operated, there's an operational model that there's some confidence in. Is that, you know, payment?
Well, the, and I want to say parking's gonna be a problem, because the biggest complaint that I've heard people say about Dexter Wellness is the cost. Yeah, and if the cost is lower, because the Y has a lower cost, I would assume that there's gonna be more, I mean, that's generally how supply and demand work. What is the cost? What do you guys, what do you pay? Do I have to ask?
Uh, no, I mean, we pay two hundred a month, but we also pay, I, it's, I don't know, it's seventy a month for childcare, or thirty-five a month? Some part of that is we also do this kids in motion part. So I think it's probably over a hundred, maybe one fifteen, one twenty.
And the Y doesn't have too, they mentioned that they do child.
They do childcare, it, it was very, well, Tony and Chris made a real point of differentiating, the difference between the kids in motion program and childcare.
Yeah.
Because the kids in motion is not childcare, there are legal requirements, and, and Tony was very, very clear on, on that, they do childcare, they follow the law. Kids in motion is, is not childcare, so, but it, it is.
I mean, actually, they're older, so, you know, almost five and seven, and I don't know if they even have, like, they can't, maybe they can't change diapers? Like, is there something like that?
It's, it's not childcare, childcare requires licensed professionals.
Okay.
The kids in motion program is done through volunteers, so it's not a licensed program. And, and Tony was very clear.
So implying that the Y is more rigorous? At least from a licensing perspective?
Different legal structure.
Yeah, yeah.
They have, it's a licensed facility, what's happening at Wellness is not licensed, so it's not childcare. What the kids in motion program is a good program.
Right, right.
But it's not childcare, and she wanted to make sure that people understood the difference between those.
I know my mother and father-in-law are going, looking, we're looking for a retirement community for them, and they are going to move out of Dexter because a lot of the centers are closing now. Because they wanna be able to be close to a facility like that so they can do the things that they wanna do. That's only two, but I'm not too sure that this wellness center, I know this wellness center is a big deal for that community.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, when we go.
And they've been here their whole life, you know, even if there was something available for the seniors, they're gonna go somewhere where they can, where they can have that close.
It's a really nice facility.
My mother and father all owe it.
Was any comment, I mean, I think somebody reached out and asked to me, as part of the reason it went under, because it was because of all the legal.
It's not because of the legal. Yeah, no, it's not because of the legal, their financial model was, was never sustainable.
Just at the Dexter location? Or, since they're not closing the other location?
Yes.
At the Dexter location.
Just because membership numbers were just too low?
It, you know, the financial model itself, based on it, it was never sustainable. It was a, they had a model.
Is it the same model they're using at other locations?
Um, I, it, yeah, it could be, but those different locations didn't require them purchasing the building. They had you with this one.
Okay.
So this one has a, like, it's at seven point something million dollar mortgage?
Yeah.
They don't have that in the other facilities. It was never sustainable, got that.
Well, going down, I'm sure it didn't help all, I mean.
Even if they.
Well, they were given, they were given buildings in other places.
Correct. Even if they, the number of members that they would need to make, have.
Was more than what they have.
Is more than what they have, they couldn't ever, they couldn't ever be able to make that.
Yeah.
It was.
Hey Sean, I shared with the other council members that my mother and father-in-law are looking for a retirement community. And one of the reasons that they're not gonna stay in the city is because of the wellness center closing. They want a facility that's closed for them. And I know it's only two people, but I'm sure there's a vast number of users, you know? Cause I got a, I'm the man to drive for me, I remember.
To comment, right, when we were young, I used to.
Well, it's good to hear that.
Yeah.
You know, when I hear twenty-six hundred members, that's a lot. But, but I know that they, we're striving to be closer to four thousand, right? You know, was their goal to think.
That's actually, if you can at least maintain the use, for the use and the availability and accessibility, if you have a chance of not losing people, if totally, if, that's just my concern. If that becomes owned by the school and then there just really isn't that type of place, that would be a, a loss, a bigger loss.
Yeah, I would, I would say so too, because I would, I think, you know, a lot of the, we all know what's gonna happen still, like, people going back to places like that, it's been slow with COVID. Like, I went to the gym before opening, there was always a waitlist for the classes, always a waitlist to get in. And now there never is one. I mean, so it's not just a wellness center issue, you know? It's that actual use, but I think that it, more and more people like, I'm thinking, oh, now I wanna go to the wellness center cause it's closer than where I was going, now this, yeah.
Do you, when you, when you were using it, when you use it, would you say that there are parts of the building, are they uniformly used throughout the building? Or are there sec- sections of the building that are more popular? They're even asset, that, that they, you know, where the ATI therapy?
Yeah, so you walk right in on the main floor.
And then it's to the left.
That would go away.
Yeah, that would go along, you know, but the thought was that that area could be the senior program and for them to play cards and do the, you know, that kind of thing.
And then.
Some of the classrooms that are upstairs could still be used for aerobics or stretching.
Yeah, I mean, there's so, yeah, that space would be available, then to the right, they even have, just like, uh, reception. So there's like the reception desk, but there's even like tables and chairs and maybe like the machines that are.
I can picture all that.
That could be, you know, even part of, you know, if they wanna keep it open or if they would wanna close it up. But then there's even another like conference room off of that, we had to move to do yoga class in there once. I don't know where that.
Yeah, that's where the forum is.
That, on the main floor there?
The conference room to the right, access to the.
Okay, that's the forum.
That's where the forum is.
So that would be available for something. But then, yeah, you go upstairs and it's cardio equipment to the left and then weights to the right, and then you have an aerobic room and yoga room, and then you have the track around it. So it's harder for me to figure out what, how you change that space up there. I will say, a whole ton of the time, the cardio equipment is not being used, probably, you know, maybe it's being used January first through the fifteenth, but I could, I don't. Uh, so it would be harder up top. And then they have the gym, which that is always full of pickleball players, let me tell you. Kind of hurts me a little bit, cause, cause the motion is right off of that. And so part of the appeal of kids in motion is you think, you can drop your kids off and hope they're gonna get some time in half the gym, but now everybody's got their pickleball then. Um, so it's still really nice what they do, they have activities, like, hey, whatever. So that space, I think you would still reserve for some sort of kid thing. I mean, that makes it accessible to more people. I think you would leave the gym, but I think that first floor space could be the senior center type space.
Thank you for that. It's been a while since I've stood over there, so.
Is, is it clean?
It's so clean.
It's very, very.
It's so nice.
See, if you don't keep that standard, I don't care who buys it, they're not gonna come.
Right.
You know, so.
And that's what, is the Y clean?
I have not been in the Y in a long time.
But Amber was really.
I thought, I heard a big actual out there.
And it's kind of why I mentioned the Dexter, you said, oh, they maintain their buildings as well, like, that's. Lots of.
Oh, that's my biggest concern.
I'd rather be there for a while.
Yeah.
That's my biggest concern, since I was two, lessons with my kids.
Yeah. We did it for a birthday party and it just, it was just old and dingy and.
I don't, I mean, that's a school for, like, them wanting to be in there for a couple hours a day. Like, if they're wanting to be in there from like five to seven or something, that's what I wanna be in.
Yeah, yeah.
Ooh, I think that they, I think that they would be more, well, you can acknowledge that any recreational space in this community gets used up quickly. They don't have enough of it, I mean, they, they, the, the gyms are all full. The, the, the fields are mostly used in the growing season. But it sounded to me like you, you would, not necessarily the five to seven space, more like the, the three o'clock to five space.
But yeah, that could be more.
Just because it's right after school, but that much, but again, this was two minutes in.
Yeah, right, yeah. No, I just wanna throw that out there, cause someone who used to work out religiously at five, from five to six.
Wow, must be there from five to seven.
So, and Tony did, from the Y, did explain that, um, it wasn't just the the amount of space they would take out, but it was also the time. Anything after five.
Yeah, was prime.
It, that's prime for the Y, and she would need, she would need that.
Their, what they, what their.
There's no negotiating.
It was not just me.
Their observation was, as soon, as soon as they opened the door at six o'clock, seniors are there.
And they're there till noon?
And they're there till noon. And then they slowly file away and the rest of the facility goes, or, they're derelict.
Yeah.
Which makes us.
Whenever I'm there with the seniors, not at six AM, but in the, like, nine to eleven, you know.
Chris was also very clear that if, if the school owned it, the structure of the partnership, and this is my words, for now, has to be within the legal framework that they operate. Um, so that, that has a different aspect to it if it's an all-school owned property.
I mean, it's always, it's always been a really good resource. From the moment it was, it was proposed and built, it's always been a great resource on the community. I just think that, I just wanna make everybody aware of the conversation going on, cause if, if there's a way we can participate somehow, I don't know what that might be, it's, long-term, it's probably a good thing, but.
So Scott has a really important question here. Well, I'm letting you, I can understand the whole multi-generational center, et cetera. How does the community feel that that gets bought privately for, for offices or the continued commercial use coming back on the tax laws?
Free, yeah.
So, and, and that's what I, I don't know if the discussion for the recreation aspect of everything becomes the priority over private development, because it impacts how I interact with people looking for properties or what I tell Ann Arbor to spark, um, as far as what we have available, you know?
I, I think, I think the worst thing that could happen is that it ends up sitting empty, cause nobody goes forward to operate it and it just becomes a building. That's the worst thing that could happen to the building. So I, I mean, what happens, I, I think that the, the community likes it as a recreational facility. That was what it was, how it was aimed at. I think that that's the only win if it can be kept in that manner somehow. Whether that's through a private nonprofit or through a public entity that would want it. That's really my priority.
I agree, and it's not like they were really thinking anyways, right? So it's not like a loss in that regard.
So a very short period of time.
Right.
The world was wonderful.
Yeah, so it's not like it's a loss to.
No, no, no. Um, and the fact that it, I mean, having, it would be one thing if it didn't have that pool, but because it's got that pool, that does, that does limit the pool of candidates on commercial private end that would come in and make it an office building. Um, or an all-office head order kind of thing. Unless you had some really well-funded, high-tech, something that wanted their employees to have this wonderful thing, um.
As a line for state, state for second phase.
Yeah.
Well, Ron, Ron Miller was at our last workshop and at the end, asked about this topic. And, um, obviously not here today to hear what we're talking about, but this is a topic we talked about in many circles over the show.
I, I wanna make one more comment about the parking situation there. So I, I would be curious to know how many, cause the schools very obviously sign there, no trail parking, no trail parking. I don't know how many people still park there for the trail access there. I'm pretty sure I've seen somebody parking sometime at the back end of the wellness center lot, pulling their bike out of it to probably get on the trail. I don't necessarily have a problem with that, but I'm just saying, I think, as I think about trails and parking and access points and things like that, I could, if there are future problems with parking, and just with it being close to a wellness center, I mean, there were many times when the following weather was nicer. Brett was in the facility, when my kids were in the facility, and I went and I ran the trail, and then I came back and finished what I was doing there. So I mean, approximation to the trail and recreation is all really nice. I, yeah, I don't know if we need additional, like, designated trail parking in that spot, or if we're just thinking the end of grand is gonna be enough for people, but just given that the schools say, don't park here, and then there's this part, other parking lot right here that doesn't say, don't park here, whatever.
DEA is on the, there's a huge plan out there right now. And while the boundary of the DEA doesn't encompass the town center, which is where Wellness is, they will be working, um, as part of their update. Um, they're not doing, they're not having a whole parking study done, we've already had that, but we, they will be building upon that information to look at, do we have enough public parking? Either around the street or in lots, that will be part of that update, um, uh, plan, uh, planning process.
That, the wellness center is in the district. In the DEA.
I don't.
Absolutely, in the DEA, you know?
Oh, you're right, you're right, you're right, yeah. The schools aren't.
The schools are not. School, the, the, the line between them all, so.
Yes, yes, you are right, thank you.
When I think to parking, not just quantity of parking, but proximity of parking, just like you were, yeah.
It's a whole thing.
It would be more dangerous.
Too bad that the schools couldn't just let the trail parking on their side of the street.
Right. Just on the way, just to make sense.
Yeah, I get during the day that there's a lot of use, but most of the time.
Especially.
And, and people park there all the time to get out and walk, I see it all the time.
Right, right, right.
And I just laugh every time, I just, you know? And, and it's not harming it, it's not harming anything.
Right.
Isn't that in, in, I know this is a public, but, um.
Well, yeah, I'm interested in her thoughts, just to see.
Yeah, and, if I get calls from, um, uh, I don't generally get calls from the school district, but every once in a while, I'll get a call that, that about people parking in the lot and making sure we let people know, you're not allowed to park there. Um, it's private property, and if they don't want people parking there, then they have to put a proper signage that talks about it, you know, the right. It's not, it's not the city's own stance. Enforcement responsibility. We put the sign up, we've, we've honored our part of that obligation, but it's, we, it's not a direct.
Still, I'm sorry, I was gonna say that, um, it would be really nice if, if we get ourselves done, you know, want the wellness center to kind of keep what we got going on, I think it's a huge benefit to the city. I used to be a member when my kids were younger, when they were in basketball, they utilize a gym. And, but I, for me personally, I'm not looking forward to some kind of partnering with the schools. I think that, um, I would be more supportive of doing a village to take care of our seniors and figure out a way that they could make that work. But anyway.
Well, like I said, you know, if, if we feel that our role in, in helping provide a funding mechanism is to set up the record authority, we just have to give knowledge in that we would be giving the authority to a board, and they would be the ones that then requesting back to same citizens. You know, we need support village, and I've always said that if a village has value and people see it, they'll vote for it. They'll vote for this work, so if it has merit, it's not an issue, you know? But it would, we would, it wouldn't be our responsibility, we'd just, we'd be getting on the vehicle, we're gonna take it, whoever they wanna take it.
I agree with that, but I also heard what Jamie was saying earlier about if, if at the outset, and knowing this could change down the road, other, you know, like, other, the townships getting involved, but if, if we're, it started with just the city taxpayer thing for it, it's like, when I used to live in, you know, when I was in high school, I wanted to go to, it was a long time ago, but I wanted to go, I wanted an Ann Arbor Public Library card. Well, you get free if you live in Ann Arbor, but if you lived outside of Ann Arbor, you paid like three hundred and fifty dollars a year to have that card. And so I would wanna see something like that considered.
It's, I mean, all of this is just a choice, I mean, multiple communities are being asked to support the senior center area.
Do you have any people, maybe they are?
I'm, all I'm saying is that there's, I mean, it's no different than like the fire department. We base it for the fire department through our general fund, straight on the taxes, we collect from our citizens. In the townships, they have a separate village to be able to fire. It's still, I mean, whether, whether, but whether that money came from their, their general fund or it came from another village, it's the same township residents that are paying into the, that pool, right? You know, right now, our, our, we're gonna get pressure to give more money from our general fund to the seniors, and I'm willing to do that to a point. I just think that at some point, it would be nice if that didn't have to be within our umbrella. But that's, that's why.
Yeah, and I wasn't saying what I'm saying is a negative, I'm just saying this is complicated and there's lots of things to consider, but I, I mean, I think it's valuable.
Absolutely, and I, you know, I, I trust that whoever, if, if they were ever to get their own facility, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna need to charge all the users something. There's probably a combination of revenue streams, more than one, you know?
Well, anyway, like, I'm a major for the city of Troy, and the city of Troy has its own recreation department. Residents were twenty bucks for the program and non-residents were fifty bucks for a program. And, right, that's, right.
But to let up buy the building, I mean, if the record authority were to buy the building, and their debt is seven point two million, and.
They can do it with our village. They, they, well, if we, if we set up a record authority.
Yeah.
They want, that, to, to buy, for seven million, over, at the same interest rates that we just did the April fourth, over twenty years, that they pay roughly ten and a half million total with interest? It's roughly five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Which, which would be, which would be two points up the mills.
Right, right.
They're never gonna ask you that much, that's why I think it won't just be them, through our record authority, trying to buy the building, that.
That wouldn't work, right.
And I suppose if they all voted for it, it would work. But, but, but.
Well, right, I, yeah.
But I mean, I, I don't know where the, I don't know about that, but that's one way to do it.
So.
But that wouldn't give them any operating money.
Right.
I'm sorry, it's not.
You're right.
So the schools think that they can potentially, they have the money to buy this?
That was what I heard Dr. Timas say, that he thought that there might be a way that they could, they could be the entity that gets, acquires the property, and then through some agreement, they would, you know, if, if laws are legal, then what they're able to do, but, but because they, you know, the school district represents kids, he felt there has to be some tie back to that facility on how it benefits the kids that are in the district. Hence, there needs to be some shared use. But ultimately, they aren't looking to operate a recreation center, they would want like someone like the Y or the Y plus five healthy towns to continue providing those programs.
I, my question then is, from your meeting, what was their appetite in continuing the conversation with everybody else? Or, you know, we're having this conversation, which is really nice, but then, you know, in a week, schools buy it?
Well, if, if they buy it, then I, I, it's probably good.
I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what was the, what was the, if, the atmosphere on that conversation that.
Dr. Timas told me that as soon as he got the financial numbers back, he would let me know how that sounded. And then he's got to go to his board and test the waters to see if they even want to vote to do that.
On the making table, we're, we're very receptive, the devil's in the details and you can't get to the details. Quite yet, it's not like there's enough information to inform us. And the, the county's priority, while they really, but Sean Turner, Cory Ron, like the idea, so does the law, but they've got to get loose side down first.
Because they're talking about it three years.
Yes, so that's gotta be, that's gotta be a done deal. Doesn't have to be completely constructed, but the 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 deal has to be done before they can start a budget or assign what they could financially do.
Well, in this day and age, that's seven and a half million dollars.
Eighty state yards. Yes, I would.
Ron, do you have something to add?
It's not me, but listen, I work in a weird industry and you'd be surprised.
And what are we gonna do without? Well, and to the point of that we're bringing out our general fund for seniors and stuff and what we're gonna do without. We also have to remember, we have a huge budget increase coming in fire coming up. I mean, that's gonna take up a lot of cap space that we have in our budget going forward and it's gonna, it's gonna impact on what is it we aren't gonna spend on. I think it's probably the first time in a long time we're gonna have starting discussions about what doesn't get included in the budget, so.
I have a question for Marie, and I hope this doesn't just pertain to me, so I just got a reassessment notice or. Is that, does everybody get those and that's related to what just happened?
Everybody gets those every year.
Every year, okay. And was that capturing the change that happened with the whole like 5% or less thing or that's something else?
But I'm sorry, say that again?
Did that have anything to do with like the whole, probably wouldn't, because it's just your assessment, that relates to your taxes. But the whole change with property taxes where they went up the full 5% this year, that is nothing to do with. Or does?
It's on there.
Yes, yeah, that's, it's, it's both the market value increase and the taxable value increase are included in it.
Okay, and where's the market value increase based on?
The sales studies. We do sales studies every year.
Okay, but everybody got this?
Yeah.
Yep.
Thanks.
Did yours have a little 1.05 multiplier on there?
I'll have to look, they were.
They're all the left.
Okay.
Just pretend they're.
That's where it is.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Can we touch on DTE electrical service?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is.
So first of all, I didn't know you were, I felt so bad when I said that.
Oh, it's fine. And then I didn't have a phone, so it's not like anybody could have asked and I. That was just completely dead.
Why, I thought I looked at the map and it didn't.
The map was not, it was a weird map this time around.
And changed it.
Yeah.
It's horrible. Got me hell of a bad review.
Yeah, it was, I think it was just like the whole back streets. So Cita was out, so I think it was like that far Cambridge and then Preston and then probably Coventry. Well, parts of Dexter Crossing had power.
Was station on that?
Yeah, the station and tower were open for five days.
Yeah, Tim's point was the water was very relevant and I didn't realize.
True, but that's what I tell them when I get on the phone, I said, this isn't about 16 residents without power, this is 4,500 people maybe without water if this thing goes down now.
Yeah.
I mean, we gotta go handle it, but it's still the point of it.
Right, yeah.
It's, it's a facility that's, you know, water wastewater, all that stuff should be up and running, you know, quicker than, or I'm not trying to root anybody else, but that's, I mean, people deserve, I mean, we have backups, but they don't need to keep that. I mean, then when they had that big windstorm about four or five years ago, we were out for six days at the filter booth where I finally called them. We didn't even know, I'm like, we've called three times, so.
The reason they don't know is with our equipment is we run off three phase for most of our stuff.
Yes.
Okay, so one, one lead can go down or two leads can go down and the dame's smart meter still reads, so they think the power's up. Another thing that I would share with the whole community is you go on every day to that DTE website. You make sure that your address is in there because they'll, they'll kick it out. They've done that to us at the water wastewater DFW for years. Not too many years ago.
You mean, you met when you were putting out, when you were reporting it out?
Because they'll kick them out. And I think a lot's got to do with if it's a three-phase system, that meter still reads off one phase. Now, a number of years ago, we tried to meet with the big leagues from DTE because it's very costly to the water wastewater treatment plant. When they're telling us to turn our equipment on, it runs off three phases, but there's only one phase there. It causes us a lot of problems.
It has.
Burns out the quit and the meters, you know, so it's, there's two different levels. There's a residential responsibility and knowing where to go and what to do. And also, any community that's got a way to water wastewater treatment equipment, it's hard, it's very hard and it's been very costly to us.
Well, and when, especially down to filter booth, like Dan says, when we go one down on one phase, it doesn't, our generator or transfer switch won't come on. So we know it's out, we don't get on power because the pump circuit don't come on, but until somebody hits or physically turns that gen, and then they gotta hit a disconnect switch and then they gotta, so it's like complete opposite of what people, what they wanted to do, what it's supposed to do by itself. They have to physically manually turn on the disconnect so not back feeding into the system.
But there's a lot of, a lot of people that were without power and that thirty, and the $35 to cover that, it's a whole thing, it's a whole thing. Did you hear about that?
That's the offer that they gave him.
It's not an offer, that's just what you get with their ultimate, but it wasn't even just that you had to be without power for 96 hours. It was that you had to be without power for 96 hours and also lost power for six, six times in the last 12 months. So it was completely unacceptable, if you ask me.
I think this is gonna go in front of the state, they think this is a big problem because, yeah, they said there was, this, this time was just, I mean, I remember for the storm, they're talking about how many people are coming from up and down south to prepare, you know, get this, prepare for this. And you still have people out seven days later, that's ridiculous. You know, and I, and I make this, this story, but I was talking to my dad, he worked there for 36 years. And I told him, I was talking with some women a couple of years ago and I said, why don't you guys start concentrating on putting this stuff underground because as much money as you're spending over time? And he says, well, you're gonna get so much money, you know, to, for the, the wire things to go underground or even like this. And I'm telling my dad this, he starts laughing and he goes, you know what's funny, son? He goes, that's, they told me 50 years ago. And if they would have started 50 years ago, right, they wouldn't have had this problem.
You know, my house at Moore has utilities, has the power utilities underground and I've never lost power.
Me too.
Well, if it wasn't for all the power that was underneath all the Brookwoods and here in farms, we'd still be cleaning it up after the tornado. And that, with them power lines being underneath instead of above, it made that a lot easier and less safe for cleanup.
Yeah, they're underground on West Street too, man. Yeah, I would do something.
But we, we have a big problem with electricity and I don't, and for me, as being the ex superintendent, DTE, DTE's untouched. We met with them, we filled out complaint forms, we sent emails documenting everything that, that had cost the city residents money that I thought that we need to be paid back. And they got us nowhere, other than we wasted a lot of time with a lot of email and putting our, getting our logbooks together and doing what we needed to. Maybe that's not true, I don't know, but that's my.
Look, but if Tim's saying that he's called three times and the third time he talks to them, they say, we didn't know, like, that is unacceptable.
It's the disconnect between people in the field and people.
Yeah, and but that's not, I mean, that's DTE's problem to fix and if they're not gonna go fix it, I'm sorry.
My personal, my house, you know, like Dan said about kicking them off, so we had a tree limb come down on our power line. Now, I still have power, but it's on my line, it's bending down like this, it's pulled this sports group halfway out that they put in two years ago. And I called them and I did, because I physically could not talk to a person, I had to put it as a bound power line, because that's the only option I had. Then I had to keep going back and then finally they started responding to this stuff and they, they kicked me out three or four times saying, you got power. I know I have power. So finally got to the, the last email or text I had, I was able to physically write in there what it was and that's when they came back the next day and took it off.
Well, where I, where I wanted to go with the strategy, I think.
Not just complaining?
Is that?
Not just saying you're complaining.
Well, complaints are warranted and that's part of it. I, I think, and I know you just said that maybe it doesn't make a good thing, but I think we need to take the time to document who was out, who knows out along wherever it is. And request a meeting to go over it, because they have, I think, well, Justin and I were on a couple of emails with, you know.
I was gonna say.
We browned out the whole thing, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I don't know, I don't know if I even totally understand what brownout actually means, okay, in terms of the whole.
Yeah, just a 120 volt or it's 110s, 90s.
Something less, something less.
Something less than full power.
And what happens if your refrigerator goes off and your motor draws more current? So you end up losing like your refrigerator or stuff like that in those.
Well, he seemed to have a pretty good handle on, you know, Dan, Dan was involved in the DEA as the DEA chair. And he has a pretty good understanding of our downtown electrical system and some provisions that the DEA might have made back in the day for different connections and that one's not like Justin. And anyway, he, 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 he was able to even point to the.
To the box.
To the hole in the box, right?
Yeah.
Anyway, I just think it makes sense to document some of this stuff and then we should ask for a meeting with whoever our rep is, as painful as it might be, yeah. No, I. Tim, Tim will have to sit in there, you won't have to, but, but I think we should share with them everything we have and share it to them because the common thing, like the south side of, the south side of Main Street didn't lose power. And we've got all underground over there, we took out all those poles and stuff that were along with the old bank or Mill Creek or Mill Creek Park is, but the pub's always about power. And Dan and Broad Street area and, and those common areas, I don't know, just makes sense to me to document them and focus on them and see if there's a long-term better way or maybe, maybe the DEA could help pay for.
Again, this is part of the security.
You know, stuff going underground long-term and then that would be a benefit.
I can tell you this whole street, because I'm on this whole.
But to just say the power's out, to just say the power's out to me is leaving too general, I think. I'd like to identify the problem areas and actually see if there's something we can do to affect the change there. Sorry, that's what I heard.
No, I, I, I have an email from a resident who had browned out as well and from DTE's perspective, they kept telling them that, no, you have power, we see you have power. And that theirs lasted over a week and then a second round actually, so I can, of course, send it to them.
Yeah.
The other thing that, and I have this from somebody that actually has a company that provided equipment for DTE. For years, DTE is, their main concern is to get the cheapest equipment that they can get. And this company provides different levels of quality of equipment and DTE always came to them and said, I'd get the cheapest. And at the end of the day, just continued work with that company because they wanted their equipment even cheaper, so they went to get in a, you know, another place that could get cheaper. But what that meant, the quality dropped big time. So that's, there, there is the part that for us that yes, you know, there are things that we can do in terms of like underground wires and any sort of things, but just keeping in mind that the, the equipment that they use is not equipment that could potentially, you know, last a while or.
It has to, just like you have a mortgage, it's a bad function.
Go ahead.
We got that email from J D Boydston, I don't know if you guys had a chance to read that article. So Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners approved a resolution instructing the county administrative children possibility, creating countywide public power utility and subpoenaing the utility executives to testify. So I don't know to what extent we as a city or staff could reach out to county to figure out if there's any role information the city can share, any roles the city can share in that conversation. I think that's relevant, yeah.
Me too, I agree with you.
Ann Arbor, we've already got a whole plan in place, they've got a whole like very big PDF about how they can.
They're Ann Arbor for public power?
Yeah, yeah, and it's basically, I can't, I can't remember all the details, but it, it, it is a process where I localize it and essentially taken away from, from the DTE. And with the idea that, so a lot of, I mean, I think some of the costs are driven by, like Michelle said about it's a supply issue thing. I've also read some articles and things and saying surrounding states don't have the same issues that Michigan has. You know, these storms are not, it's not like they cross the border to Michigan and all of a sudden it's a, it's a bad storm. It was a bad storm in Illinois, it was a bad storm in Ohio and they're not having the same problems that we're having. So it seems like there's something different, but. But Ann Arbor does have, I mean, it's literally, if you go and I don't, I read it a long time ago, it's on their website, you can download it, it's got a whole plan there about the different options and stuff. But, but it's a whole other level because like Chelsea has.
Well, that's what I was gonna add, what you just said, I mean, how hard would it be to call Chelsea?
Yeah.
I mean, if you look at the news the last two or three weeks, there's other communities that have their own electrical companies that are not having the problems that we are.
But Chelsea, Michigan does?
Yeah.
And does like Lansing's? Is that where they're put back and think of it?
Well, I mean, I, I, I have no idea what the cost might be, but I mean, could you, could you connect some lines to Chelsea and contract, contract with them directly and.
Oh, they could be our provider.
They could be our provider.
That's how it is up north at my house, so I live in a, I don't live there, I do not live there, I live here. My house is in a township up there, Chalkley Township right outside Marquette, City of Marquette. I pay all my electric bills to the Marquette Board of Power like, so it's not, you know, it's under.
The electrical, they, they're generating the power.
That's right, that's true.
The thing that we have to remember in D, whether it's Ann Arbor or Chelsea, they may connect to the system that DTE has, but they're generating their own power and I don't, I'm not familiar with Ann Arbor study, but how are they generating it?
No, they should, they would still be there for DTE, it's just they would have the distribution and they would allow people to set up solar or set up, you know, battery or in their own houses and stuff and, you know, link into the system potentially more advantageously than Detroit Edison does so that the system itself can be more sustainable, so.
So it's a sustainable, but not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
A more affordable.
I don't know, I, I don't, I don't remember.
So that, that's a good question.
There wouldn't be a generator or electricity, yeah.
So that would be a good study, if you will, to put into your goals and objectives. Is that a study that you want, you have done for, for Dexter to investigate a situation similar to what Ann Arbor's planned on and what Chelsea does to see if it's something worth pursuing after the study is done? Is that something you want to add to your goals and objectives?
I think it would be a great idea, I think our residents who have suffered a lot would be very happy if we do that. At least we can speak intelligently and more, with more knowledge about all of it. Exactly, exactly. And while we're on the topic of that, just so I don't, I want them to know that I relayed this message because we're on this topic. But here on street was, they were all out from February 27th around 10:00 PM until February 26th around 6:00. And then they lost their power again on March 3rd for almost 24 hours. And if that outage, I'm on this group message with that street. And if that outage, somebody, one of them said that, you know, they wish, they would have thought that since we moved here that like we would pay more attention. And I was like, you know, I wish it were that easy, but it's not, we've called many times and this was after you'd already talked to us about the water tower thing.
So I was able to explain that, but like Sam was saying, I mean, if we looked into it and were able to better explain to people.
I agree.
The options or, you know, even what Dan's, what you've just explained today is like helpful for the next time.
This building had a brownout for just five days.
Yeah. Yeah, they were totally out. And then the brownout, I think, the funeral home was totally out because I know the people who lived there and they didn't have power for, and maybe even longer than that.
Well, the thing, the thing is, is that. What's your problem and you were having?
Yeah.
He was calling every day.
And that's what I was telling him.
So, I mean, because of the lift station.
Right, right.
You know, so a lot of times we're calling and it's, they can't.
And so do things matter.
What's that? Well, it's not just that, but we're calling for the residents too.
Yeah.
You know, and we covered this whole city with equipment, lift stations, alarms, different things, so. And not related, but it is related, you know, the water and wastewater D W Ws calling every day and still not.
And we actually have different numbers than what the, what residents call. I mean, we, we, we have a number, we actually can talk, physically talk to people too.
And one thing that Joe brought up in terms of like other states, um, my coworker's nephew is a lineman and he was cool and he works northern Chicago. So at the same time that they had, we had this storm and they had this storm, they were pulled to come to Michigan, Jackson, you know, this area to do the work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is this something you want to, just coming back, is this something you want to add to your goals and objectives?
Well, I think, I think it needs to go on as a, yeah, like I said, I think we should start by documenting everything you know was an issue. And if there's something we can study that leads to a better result, I think we have a responsibility to think about that.
Yeah, and I, as a planner, I visualize a study including exactly what you're talking about. As opposed to staff just going off in this direction to address that.
But that was, I was trying to find an email from Dan. Dan said that this green generator over here was making all sorts of noises.
And was there?
When, during the, yeah.
Some generator over there, it was loud.
Yeah, there's all sorts of noise coming from that, you know. But, you know, usually when it's not, when it's noisy, that's not good.
Right.
That's not what, you know.
It means it's running and it's actually running for wrong power.
Right. What's gonna be difficult is, I think that Tim has got enough information from the past ten years or however many years on what happens with water, wastewater, D W W, but how do you get all that information from the residents?
Yeah.
Because that plays a big part.
Well, you know, I think we could reach out through email if, I mean, it would take some, somebody to monitor the responses, but we could, we could send out, hey, we're trying to get a document or get information down over who was out.
People would take the time to say, I was out, they'd love to go on next door and say.
Well, right, and share it on those locations because it's all over Facebook too, and then you just link it to something that goes directly to you guys and.
You need to set up a form or.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, just, what, if you could standardize it so that when it gets to you, it's standardized.
Right, like, yeah, yeah.
And to put the big slide on the face there, buddy, this is the month they started their new rate change at.
Yeah, right, yeah, right.
So there's, there's, if you watch the news, there's a lot of communities that are not happy with, or not feeling well. Not feeling well by far. Okay, well, I was, I was, I asked Justin to add that because I wanted to try and turn it into something, boy, because I'm glad there's so many people wanna do that. I think that's, I think that's good.
I will say the silver lining, at least for me, was that I was making an effort to be on my phone last.
Yeah, okay.
And, and, okay.
But I, you know, I've been, I've been through those maps, like I've, I've reached out to you before and Jim and I, I didn't have any sense of your hours.
The map was not, and there are articles about how confusing the map was.
Yeah.
So that is also a problem.
Well, we were also, we, we didn't lose power, but we were looking at it and then Carl was talking, locking trouble and he came back and he said, I heard all these things, I thought, who is running their lawn mower? And then I realized there were generators on it and he was like, what? And, yeah.
That's why I'm on my, I'm not dealing with it, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the, the car went out the, the day before, or two days before we were, they were ready to move our personal, personal house.
Oh.
And, uh, so we spent the night, you know, in our apartment that didn't have power. And we ended up moving when we didn't have power. And so we, we, we got to move in the dark and that was fine.
Yeah, but.
Pretty headline.
Yeah, I just said, back to what I was meaning.
Here is something else on the news that I don't know if anybody's thought about is the train derailments.
Yeah.
And people know we have the same thing going on here with chemicals and stuff going through here. Does anybody?
But what's being transported?
Yeah.
We do, or you're asking the question?
I believe we do because the past fire department, fire chiefs have talked about it before.
It's something to keep up on.
What's that?
It's, it's definitely something to keep up on, um, because of what's happened in other areas and, um, but like we all know, dealing with the railroads and trans, transparencies very difficult. But it is something we should do our best to keep on.
Taking D T E on that one. I just, I just. If the fire department had a plan or what, I mean.
Those are all good questions, yes.
Well, so, so, so one of the things that I wanna do coming up is engage with county emergency operations, uh, fire department, our, on the staff and set up trainings for, you know, if an emergency happens, you know, we operate our emergency operations center and what, what do we do, what, what are the next steps?
We.
And, and work through, set some of those, set some of those scenarios.
We did do that, yes, we, uh, here, uh, last year with, uh.
With, with the WISL region.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and so.
Okay, no problem.
Yeah, we're gonna wrap up with the, the, so, okay, well, go ahead.
This is just one other thing, and I feel like maybe I've mentioned it on other topics before. But if you guys are ever, like D T E's are ever doing that again, what we, when I worked in the state senate, we would always recommend call your senator's office. There's always somebody in that office whose job it is to like be the liaison with all of the different departments of the state and offices that they work with. And those people have very different phone numbers that they can use to call.
Actually, it's great you brought that up because, um, Congresswoman Zingle was at the Dexter Corps on previous cabinet table. And, and she has done a lot of work in, in that area with train derailments and such. And of course, we have Georgia that, um, is a connection, so her office might be a good place to connect with.
I know the state house as well, but they have smaller staffs, so the state senate offices are usually able to be more responsive to those type of, um, requests.
Thank you.
And then, and so, sorry, while, while we're kind of wading into that water, I just wanted to bring it up real quick. We did get a letter from Harrison Zingle's office that they are opening up their annual call for appropriations. And it's due on March twentieth. They are looking for basically shovel-ready plans for appropriations requests. Uh, I know that we've talked in the past about, you know, like, um, public safety facilities as being, you know, something that we might, you know, like, tread shoes for, you know, state federal funding for. If, if Chelsea's supportive, I mean, I can try and put something together related to that for the appropriations request. I don't know.
Well, if there is, there is a request that Gordon Smith drafted for the Dexter seniors, I can tell you that, those are.
Well, and if it's, if it's like, once we shovel-ready, is this like next year?
Well, yeah, shovel-ready is a higher fire call. Their, their request, their request could be considered, buying a building might be shovel-ready or already out.
Um, on the train thing, Zach had brought up, and I mentioned to you when we talked this weekend, please go. Zach had mentioned that at the, at the forum, that the D A F D doesn't have, uh, cost recovery. Or is it an ordinance, the D A F D do the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, well, well, this, so it isn't the D A F D doing the ordinance, would we, we, we would do the ordinance to allow them to make that recovery?
Well, and to your point about what the, the city would do in terms of response to that type of thing. I mean, if we don't have something like that, we should have, I mean, well, that's, that's a band-aid after the fact. But I mean, if we were not able to financially try and recruit from somebody.
Well, so, so, so it might deserve to, to, to hold those trainings. Um, it actually stemmed from attending a, a Michigan municipal executives conference where we attended a session that talked about the, the dam breaches of your minimums.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And, you know, they, 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 their administrator went through like basically hour by hour what they were doing at, you know, as they were learning that the dams were, were on the verge of breaking.
Yeah.
Breaking and then, you know, follow-up to, to that. Um, you know, there, there's a brand new different potential emergencies that, that, you know, we could think is, you know, the tornado being one.
True.
Um, and, you know, we, we do have a lot of new staff that, you know, may not have participated in, you know, and were just the operations training or, um, and so being able to talk through that and, you know, have a pretty honest opinion about, you know, this is what we do if this happens.
Well, and for natural things like the tornado, ice storm, I mean, yeah, that's stuff that we have to deal with as it comes. But if there was a train that derailed right here and burst into flames right here and, I mean, I, not positive, but I think on the D A F D, I think we end up bearing a lot of the cost of that as well, even with the D A F D.
That was, yeah, yes, and that, the, the question was who administers it? The, the, the cost, the discussion of the cost recovery ordinance has been out there for eight, nine years or more.
Right.
So it was always the question of who, who administered it and who did the, um, like who was in control of that? And where does the money go back to?
Right.
But I, to, to your point, I mean, if, if, if the, if the, if setting it up for those major issues like a train derailment is the primary goal, I would think that that's something that should be done.
Right, I mean, because part of the discussion that you're talking about is all the way down to the level of when we respond to a medical, you know, we're gonna charge them the same way they.
Yes, yes, that's good.
And manage the paperwork and do all that. And, I mean, you could probably make an argument, you could hire somebody that takes care of all that or a company to do all that. But it is an extra level of administration that they.
Right, but fire department doesn't have it right now.
Right.
Exactly.
But for something catastrophic and for something, I mean, within the city, I mean, because, right, this could be like, this could be an industrial building that has, you know, spilled or something like that or, you know, other things. I mean, we, we have to be in a position where somebody just doesn't say, oh, we're all good because we got insurance and the city's not holding the bag for.
Everything else.
Everything else, whatever it might be, you know, tens or hundreds or more thousands of dollars of costs and so on.
Well, there we could try to bring something back on that. Doesn't have to be the N F B to have a say, but we could figure out how to talk about that for the extreme cases, I think.
So in seven days. It'll be my fourth meeting in seven days.
The cost recovery ordinance, that was something that all the, all the D A F D members needed to agree on, right?
Say that again.
Did all the D A F D members need to agree on that cost recovery ordinance?
No, I don't think so. I think we could set it up as a city, but then the question, maybe the question that got stuck on was, at one time Webster Township wanted to do it with the idea that, because their thinking was that every accident that occurred on North Territorial through their township, the D F D responded to that most people's auto motor insurance covers a five hundred dollar ambulance, car chart or whatever, and that, that automatically they can get five hundred dollars back. Because it's a real popular thing, it's already, it's already in everybody, everybody's already paying for it. And then, then, you know, you have to just have somebody that sends the bill and then you get the five hundred dollars. Well, then, then the question was asked, well, where does that money go? And at the time, Webster Township made the law, well, we get it. But we all know that every time there's a run, we're all paying for the run. So if it got into this, well, how do you share, how do you share the recovered money? Where does it, if it's, if it comes into the D A F D instead of a community specific? And, and then you can see where, if, if we're the only one that had it, we would have to rely on like Marie and Jenna and Brenda to administer it and the money would come back to the city. If we're the only one, that's the way I see it. But what, the broader discussion was that if all three of the communities could put it in place, D A F D would administer it and then the money would just, wherever, wherever it happened, it would come back and you put that towards apparatus or you put it towards whatever.
But you're not saying your cost. But, but you could also potentially get it for, you know, the, they don't have the utilities then on, on the event or, you know.
Right, we have other city costs that we would want to try and recoup if somebody was at fault.
With retention.
Yeah.
Right. And, and it never got past the, you know, the, the F D F D had to administer and was out of that, that every event type thing, you know, to the burden of that thing. But if we're talking, that's why if we're talking about the extreme events, there's less administration involved, but probably something that we would have to do here, I think, and just somebody, you know, there's a kick that out. I guess I'll bring it back and talk about it some more, I heard.
Will we get to that first quick?
Sure.
Back to your goals and objectives, you broke a record, I mean, I just, under, um, primary portion of government on page three, page seventeen and twenty-five of your packet, um, there's an objective to research the impact of extending Baker through mining, mining the park. Is that still something that council considers?
No.
Would council prefer to take that out and replace it with, um, abandoning the portion of the park that's in the public right of way and then combining that into one parcel? Because right now it's two parcels and the, the nose, the point, um, at the intersection of center, central and main, that's in the public right of way.
It's in the public right of way? Usually that passes on it.
The two parcels that are for the old cottage gym?
Yeah.
Those will have passes.
Yeah.
The point, not the main, is just that Baker right of way.
It's setting the, gave you this part there?
No.
Over the board.
It, it's, it's shown on maps, but it's not officially, it's still officially a road. So if you're all okay with pulling out the research of Baker going through, we replace that with, um, vacating the road and maybe mining the park all in one parcel?
I don't know how you do that stuff. I mean, is it just a nodding of heads around the table bit of a thing or?
It's a, if, if there's a formal vacation last night.
No, 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 I'm just not saying the goal.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, so, 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 I mean, you know, multiply the, these goals go into your budget document? And so.
Yeah, we, we.
And at this point, it's, it's.
Well, what it's, is let's say there's three people that don't want to do that.
Right.
That don't, that don't have that viewpoint. It's like, how do we get the goal so that they're our goals instead of? I mean, because like, for instance, the cost recovery thing, that's mine, I, that's something I, I mean, somebody said, I don't think I wanna do that, that's a different discussion, so.
Well, it has, it has always been my goal to have a document like this adapted, okay? So if there's, there, there's some proposed changes here, um, for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, right, that are blue. You know, at, at some point here in the near future, well, these goal-setting workshops transition into the budget review workshops, right? The next time we'll probably meet like this, we'll have a working draft of one, the general fund, the street fund, or something. I would like to have this, the stuff from page fifteen now, you know, on a. you know, on a meeting to adopt.
When?
Either the March twenty-seventh or first meeting in April.
So would it be fair to say, whatever the list is, on that March twenty-seventh meeting or whatever meeting it is, council, if there's anything that you don't like on here, raise your hand at that point in time, so we have discussion about it.
Yeah, but I'm completely with you. I I don't think we need to, I would rather, I would rather the goal be focused on how do we make sure that our park areas are defined as park, because, you know, the same right-of-way thing was done when um.
Fourth Street.
Fourth Street and Twain Park, or we call it up there.
Peace Park.
Peace Park, and all of those were right-of-way at one time.
Mm-hmm, I think that was a part.
Park, all of them were.
Right, I believe Peace Park, Fourth Street was properly named.
Okay.
I can double-check that, but it seemed to recall.
I think it was too.
Yeah, that one was, but um.
Well, let's do my number.
Okay. But at least we can put this in so that when you're looking at it, it's the entire.
I mean, you don't really believe any of them or nothing.
I agree.
I mean, it shouldn't be, really, any of them.
I'm sorry?
If any of the parks, when you do anything.
Right, we we know we have to do a land division of eighty-one forties on the old park.
Right.
So Justin and I are working on that one, but it could be an overall goal that we just tweak that.
Yeah, I mean, I assume, I guess the First Street Park was donated, so I don't know if that's.
So First Street Park, half of First Street was vacated and combined with that portion um that was private, and that's what creates First Street Park.
Right, but then it was designated as a park at that point, or it's just right-of-way or?
No, it has been designated.
Okay, that's one thing, it's just a matter of confirming whether or not all the parks are set up correctly.
But but there there are still, there is still park equipment in the right-of-way.
True, I understand.
Don't have that DTE on the line.
I think as long as we keep this as a track changes type document until we get to that point, that would be helpful.
That's a good thing.
To have a track changes on our. A lot of track changes, two of each, yeah.
Yeah.
How are you getting negotiations going?
That was on the list.
Um, well, we 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 got a meeting Thursday. Um, and our goal was to hopefully get to a point where the union could present um a tentative agreement to to their membership. What what we what we proposed is essentially modifying the um wage table for post-two thousand eleven employees um to shorten it down from, I think it's thirteen staffs to ten staffs. Um, change the range for um administrative assistant and utility billing clerk um to match uh essentially what what is current for um DPW workers. Um, because and then, you know, three and twelve of us, if you'd like, but um the thought was that, you know, those positions have historically been.
Lower than they should be.
Lower than they should be.
Lower than what? What's that name? Wages?
Wages.
Wages are behind that.
Yeah.
How do we know that? Comparables to other.
So this 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 kind of came from me, and this is my logic on it. Um, the administrative assistant position is historically held by a woman. And a lot of these type of women-dominated jobs are historically lower than men. And the qualifications for the DPW worker of having a high school diploma and certain skills is pretty much the same as the qualifications for administrative assistant, which is having a high school diploma and certain skills, different skills, but you still have to have some skills. So I felt that it was appropriate, and I I talked to Justin and thought about that, to bring these up to, based on that, up to the same. And then the logic, and then the logic with the utility billing clerk is that that has a higher level of responsibility than the administrative assistant. So we kind of tied that in with the lab hack, which has a more technical type of requirements than just a utility worker.
And you're getting these numbers off MML or calling around? How are you coming up with the numbers for?
Yeah, yeah, we 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 we've used the MML wage study, because that's.
Who started there? No, I, I would think that um that would be pretty easy to do with anything. DPW worker, water, you know, anything, right?
Well, and 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 the thing is that not everything that is established, right? So when you look at the MML wage study, you know, it might say that, you know, Dexter wages are behind, but then we also offer the opportunity for folks to go get licensed.
Right.
And so that, you know.
Well, if you wanna get that down to dirty, you you can call MML and they can do a study on it also, like was done a few years back.
Right, but I I mean, that that's a several month long process that we that we paid for.
Right.
Um, but, you know, we 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 didn't go that far to to have, you know, MML perform a formal wage study, um, not our behalf. But so we're proposing those changes and then um three percents for um post-two thousand eleven employees for the next three years, and then four percent for the pre-two thousand eleven employees. Um, recognizing that um because of the changes in the wage table and the continuation of staffs that employees post-two thousand eleven receive or would receive um in in, I don't wanna say in equal, but um a much greater benefit than those for pre-pre-pre-two thousand eleven veteran staffs. Um, the opportunity for growth there is is much less. Um.
It it's a challenge every year to do this negotiation. It's gotta be a bigger challenge this year, isn't it? It's a challenge all the time, yeah, the the, you know, the the employees that have been here the longest, most of them are way beyond this wage table that's in the, that was historically in the document, okay? But the idea behind the wage table is that there was a starting wage and then as, in theory, as you grew to understand your roles and responsibilities, got more experience, you made, on the anniversary date of your hire, you got bumped to the next level, next level, next level. But it's a long scale, okay? Well, most of the people who worked up to two thousand eleven are at the end of that scale. Right. So when when we historically would give a bump, we would give like a three percent raise on the scale, they would get the annual bump plus the three percent. There was a benefit that they would, double benefit that they would negotiate or get. Well, anybody who's at the end of the scale doesn't get the annual bump. So or privately employees, of course, they, they're the ones that have the pension, the reason we would say pre-two thousand eleven, post-two thousand eleven. In two thousand eleven, that's when the village stopped the defined benefit offering, new hires. And anybody hired after, post-two thousand eleven, now has defined contribution plan. So there's multiple facets of things that are are talked about, and depending on who's in the room, I don't wanna say Kurt doesn't care, but Kurt's a pre-two thousand eleven employee, whereas Eric's the post-two thousand eleven. They're representing different segments of the population, they have a different benefit package. So there's a lot of things, there's a lot of things to think about, and are we treating, are we treating all of the employees fairly in what we're offering as best we can, realizing that that some have different benefits? Right, example. Well, I guess my point with with the way the economy is and all of us sitting at this table, know how much milks went up, eggs went up. I mean, what did they just give Social Security the biggest increase in a long time? I didn't know how you guys can manage that with the way the state of the economy is, and it doesn't look like it's gonna, you know. Well, the the new wage table that Justin mentioned, where we we actually took off the lowest starting ones and the highest one. But we 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 slightly increased the staff increase from two and a half to three percent, you said that, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mentioned that, but.
But when you reset everybody from where they are on the old table to where they're on the new table, they they're gonna get a significant bump, is what I'm saying, and they're they're they should, they'll all be, they'll all have a starting, the intention when we bring this back, which is passed by employees, is that they would all be in a better position to handle once we've seen the inflation.
And so, you know, when we say four-four-four, three-three-three, you know, for the post-two thousand eleven employees, it's not just three-three-three. It's three-three-three plus whatever impacts there are from from the changes to the wage table.
So you got, you got the defined benefit, you got the healthcare after the retire. Eventually, that's gonna run out, and everybody will be on the same coverage, right? Right? Yeah, so what you're saying, so so we we used to offer, we used to offer a plan, an HMO plan. And then we offered an HSA plan, and all new employees are required to take the HSA plan that are in the union, that you're getting at. Right, yeah. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, you can't really, there's nothing you can do with that, other than time to ride it out.
Tell everybody it's post-two thousand eleven.
What's that?
And tell everybody it's against the post-two thousand eleven people.
Exactly, exactly. But the table has always been tough. And for you guys to negotiate, I'd love to get rid of it. I mean, so maybe this is the time.
They don't want to, but I, we wouldn't do that whole story.
Every, every three years, yeah, you've heard me say it, because you were at the tables or whatever. But that's something that you got to say.
That would benefit us to.
It would absolutely benefit everybody. I don't believe it, because it takes my certainty. Yeah.
Well, the 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 problem.
It gets them their fact anyway, it does.
So the the problem when you cut it in half is they want, double the amount of value in each step. So, you know, if it's three percent each step, and you cut it, you cut the table in half, then they want six percent each step. And then they want eight percent increase, they want their annual percent increase on top of that, so.
I guess the big thing for me was just to point out for everybody here that prices have gotten out of control. And we do, I believe, we do have all the way across the board, council members and staff, we've got dedicated people. Absolutely. You know, and I don't think anybody would disagree with that. So that's the part I thought was tough, I was trying to manage that.
Well, I mean, that money then comes from the general fund.
Well, it comes across, it comes from all the funds.
All the funds, which that comes from residents who are experiencing the same situation too, so it's like everybody wants everybody's salary to go up. You know, where that money's gotta come from somewhere.
Well, I I agree a hundred percent. Well, I wonder, when we first proposed all of this, we got to a number, I asked you earlier, Justin, I said, I don't, I can't answer the question, what's four-four-three or three-three-three or? I said, I, can you convert that, predict what that's gonna do for dollars? Because what then needs to be different funds?
Yeah, yeah.
What is the increase to the water fund? What is that? That help, based upon how our staff? And they they've done a nice job, like, we're gonna share that with everybody when we bring it back, don't see that. So you can see how the the overall package that we hopefully tend to redo would affect the budget for dollar rewards.
And 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 there there are some things that don't necessarily have a, you know, monetary value, as far as change goes, like, um, you know, what we talked about at that at the last meeting is introducing a PPO option in addition to an HMO healthcare option. But that employees would pay the the total difference between the HSA, HMO, and the HSA PPO. You know, it's cost neutral for us, but, you know, give give away this one, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Right. Thank you. Yeah, you're welcome, you're welcome. We're gonna have a closed session on that, please, so we can, if I'm up there, do the teleprompter. Okay, so it's like twelve fifteen, everybody pretty good? I appreciate the participation, everybody. Have we had anybody join us without arrangements?
Yeah.
I invite two. I appreciate the good conversation. This is why I got a council, I mean, we covered a lot of different stuff.
Seriously.
It was fun. Good job, everybody. Have a great weekend.
And say, go Blue or go Green, but we're both out.